Happy New Year.
That was great. Oh my God, I gotta go up and tell you.
Well, I cut it short again because I couldn't take it being long. It was too much work for me.
It is a lot of work, isn't it? I love the shape and all that. Did you have a good New Years?
Yeah, how about you?
Good.
Calm.
Yeah. Everything all okay?
Yeah. Busy, busy.
Busy, busy. Busy, busy and the girls?
Good, good, yeah. Yeah. Now, it's like a new year, gotta get busy, get running, you know, crazy.
Husband, have you heard from Patty?
Of course. My best friend, how we see.
Oh.
I see her every, all the time still.
Oh.
She's doing good. She's enjoying her retirement. That's good. Yeah, that she should.
Well, maybe this year we can catch up.
Yeah, yeah. We'll have to do lunch sometime.
I know.
Give me a call, we'll do lunch. Okay.
Over here. And Melissa is the...
Push. There you go. Yeah, she's gonna go work for Jeff.
Isn't that wild?
Of course, yeah. Are you gonna think? Testing. Scott, is it up in, I got it going. Can you see it? Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, nope. That's not a good sign. Hello? Are you ready, David? Can you hear? Can you hear? Yep, good.
We have some additional seats if you want to sit down, those of you who are standing. Supervisor Cox should be here momentarily. Look to your left.
Oh, he's at... And he's not an easy one to miss, Bill. Or Steve.
But you are stealthy. All right. All right. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors this first month, Tuesday of January 2016. And if you would please stand and join me in our salute to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready? Salute.
At the age of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Well, we will have as our first order of business the election of the Chairman and the Vice Chairman of the Board for the coming year, but before we do that, I just wanted to cover just a few highlights of 2015 year. You know, I didn't realize until we were moving offices, Chairman's office is one that you move into for a year and then you move out of it. And it's more difficult to move in than move out because you've had four years of accumulation before you move in. And only one year when you move out. But I was putting up the plaques yesterday in my new office of chairmanship plaques, and there were four of them. I thought I'd served four terms. Actually, I've served five, so it's hard to imagine serving this in this capacity five times, but it's been an honor and a privilege to do so. And 2015 was a significant year in Tulare County, and I just thought I'd cover a few of the highlights. One is fiscal health. You know, the Board adopted a budget exceeding $1.2 billion for all funds with an increase of 1.5 million or 5.2 percent over last fiscal year's property tax roll. And as such, the county is in excellent fiscal health. I'm sorry, the increase was 1.5 billion on property tax as far as assessed valuation. Economic development, we've had major economic development projects completed, creating millions of dollars in new investments and jobs. Successful examples include Streamline Irrigation in Traver, Seton Farms in Tarabella, Air Liquide in Pixley, and Daryl Storage outside of Visalia. And those are just four of, we've had many other smaller projects in the county, but very successful economic development year and more to come. Capital projects to address the long-term needs of county facilities and staffing, the Board approved an agreement to purchase the Signa Building. I had hoped we'd have that done in 2015. It's in escrow, but we expect to close that early in 2016. Road projects in Mezurar, the Resource Management Agency completed approximately $80 million in new road and bridge projects designed to improve road safety and promote efficient flow of goods and services. An important example using Mezurar funds for this road safety program included many safe routes to school projects completed throughout the county for the benefit of our children. Law enforcement continues to meet the long-term needs of the residents of Tulare County, and the sheriff is working commendably to provide new jail facilities in Porterville and Sequoia Field. Tulare County was highly responsive to the drought by securing millions of dollars in grants for bottled water program and for the ultimate construction of new facilities in East Porterville, Yedam, Seville, Monson, Plainville, and other local communities in the unincorporated areas. And lastly, with our labor, we, the county was able to successfully enter into a memorandum of understanding with all employee bargaining units except one regarding wages, hours, and other terms of employment on two-year contracts. And it's been a while since we've been able to do that. So 2015 was a very successful year. I'm very happy to hand off these responsibilities to my successor and know that the county's in very good hands. And lastly, I would like to, it's not on my list because I asked the CIO to prepare these highlights, but I think one of the highlights also is the selection of a new CIO for the county. The county administrative officer is a very significant role in the leadership and development of the county's plan and operations, and I feel like that we have an excellent person in Mike Spottis. So I feel like we're in good hands as we turn this ship over to our new Chairman this year. With that, I will entertain a motion for Chairman and Vice Chairman for 2016.
Mr. Chair, it would give me a great pleasure to nominate Supervisor Mike Innes as Chairman of the Board for this year and Supervisor Alan Ashida as Vice Chair.
All right. Is there a second?
I will second that motion gladly.
Any further discussion? Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Congratulations. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Worthley. And on behalf of the Board and the county, and thanks for an excellent job as our Chairman through these, it was tough times last year with this job, so thank you for your continuing support and your leadership. Appreciate very much.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, or Mr. Ex-Chair, I hope you left a fifth space on your wall.
Okay, let's, we're gonna move on to Board of Supervisor matters. We'll start out with Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right. Thank you, new Mr. Chairman. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season and welcome to 2016. Week starts off fairly busy, lots of different meetings and events, but one event in particular I wanted to highlight is the grand opening of the Literacy Center at 417 North Locust here in Visalia. That's gonna be taking place on Wednesday from, I believe, four to six. Kudos to our library staff for working to bring reading into all areas of the county, including within the cities of Visalia as well. So I look forward to attending that and supporting our library, and I look forward to a great year this year, so lots of pressure on you, Mr. Innes.
Supervisor Cox.
Well, last couple of weeks, I think everyone's been involved with family, had a couple of family events, went to the Los Angeles garment district day after Christmas, very interesting place to be the day after Christmas, but enjoyed time with family there. Some sad things to announce, we've had in the last couple of weeks, I've been to three funerals, and they have two funerals this week of men and women that have been very important to our family, that, the good news, they lived very long lives, all in their late eighties, but people that were very important to our family in helping us to raise our children. So three funerals last week, and then I'll be at a funeral tomorrow on Thursday this week for very close family friends.
Supervisor Worthley?
Well, I really don't have much to say. I hope everybody did have a good Christmas and a good New Years. I had the interesting experience of having my phone break on me about five days ago, and you know, you don't realize how reliant you become on these stupid things and not having one. It's kinda given me a new lease on life and realized that, you know, there's other things to do besides scroll through your emails, so I will have a new phone, I believe, today. Get back to my old habits, I'm sure. But yeah, I look forward to this coming year and to some things that are gonna be transpiring, and best wishes to Mike in his new position. Thank you.
Supervisor Sheeda?
I have the pleasure of spending some time with my two granddaughters, and one of them's about two months old. And I had great pleasure of spending some time with our grandson, which we haven't seen for two years. He's with the 82nd Airborne, and he was able to come home for Christmas, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, it's kinda good to see Success Dam at over 10,000 acre feet. In fact, we've already started some flood releases because we gotta take the pool down. Right now, it's higher than it was all of last year, so that tells you what kinda runoff we've been getting and what kinda rainfall. And that's just the tip of the iceberg according to this El Nenu, which a lot of you know, I call it El Menudo, because we need more in the mix than just an El Nenu this year. We need some real rain and real weather, so looking forward to that. Been out checking out the Road 224 Bridge over Deer Creek. It's coming along well. That will continue even if we do get some runoff because they're up out of the water now and be able to finish that bridge up hopefully early spring. So those are the two things that I have this morning, and looking forward to a year as your Chairman, and also I'll be coming up with my State of the County speech in the next couple of weeks and filling you in on what my expectations are and what the goals are for the county for the coming year, so looking forward to that. Okay, now we have, we need to recognize our current Fire Chief, Joe Garcia, who is retiring, and I have a plaque for you, and if you wanna meet me down here, we'll... Joe, thank you. You know, people don't realize you're the Fire Chief, and I can realize what you go through because I got a lot of mountain communities. A lot of mountain communities, and so you don't realize that you're not just out here in the unincorporated areas, you know, putting houses out and stuff. You've gotta make all those people in the mountains happy, and they think you should be there seven days a week and 24 hours a day, but you've done an excellent job of getting that message out and telling people that, hey, we can only do as much as we can, and we do the best job we can, and you've always done a good job with that. And I think that your firemen really appreciate your leadership. I know we do. I think you were an excellent choice. We just hate to see you go. You know, we really do.
And I hate to leave.
Yeah. But you know, it's kind of a unique situation here with Joe. You know, his brother was the Fire Chief at Porterville City Fire Department, and he was the County Fire Chief all at the same time. What a family, you know, when you got two major fire leaders in your family. That's quite an accomplishment in itself. So Joe, you've done a great job. Gives me an appreciation of your years of service, dedication to the community in Tulare County. I wanna give you this, as Jim Maple says, the big county coaster, but congratulations, good luck to you. Hopefully you'll stay in touch and stay in the area so we can see you from time to time, but appreciate your leadership and your able to lead our fire department for the last few years, looking forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yes, those mountain communities do present a challenge every now and then. My memory's not as great as it used to be, so I wrote down a few notes. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, County CIO, County Council, thank you very much for the recognition. I am humbled. It's been an honor and a privilege for me to serve as the Tulare County Fire Chief. In 2006, I joined the ranks of the Tulare County Fire Department as the Division Chief with a brand-new fire department. Four years ago, you appointed me as the County Fire Chief, and that was a great honor. As the last of the four original chief officers that were hired to create the new fire department, I cannot help but be and feel privileged to have been a part of the department from the very first go, from the very inception. I know that I leave this department a much better place than when I became Fire Chief and in very capable hands, as I have full trust in my staff. Together, we have made great strides and improved our operations as well as our service to the community, and I'm proud of all of them. Friday, I will leave county employment after 42 years in the fire service, and anyone who has been in any profession for that long of a time knows and understands that success is a team effort. I leave with ambivalent feelings as I love what I do, but I also have other obligations to my family and to myself. I've made many friends within the county family, and I wanna thank the department heads and all other county employees who made me feel welcome, assisted me, and continue to assist the fire department. I will miss many of you, but I have warm memories of your friendship. I would also like to acknowledge and thank my wife, Espy Garcia, for being there for me for nearly 44 years and being by my side and supporting my every effort in whatever I wanted to do. I know that whoever you appoint as the new Tulare County Fire Chief will find an orderly and well-functioning fire department, and I thank you for your confidence and support as I've been, as I have enjoyed being part of Tulare County and the workforce.
While they're taking a photo op, I would like to thank the Chief for attending our Three Rivers Community Meetings every month. It's probably one of the first times we had a Fire Chief that attended almost every one of those meetings, and I wanna thank the Chief and made the people in the community feel a lot safer, and also they knew that Tulare County Fire was looking after their best interests, so thank you, Chief.
Chief, it's a pleasure to have you as our Chief in many ways. I know we do, we have a well-functioning department, but you are a commendable individual and a person that I'm very pleased to say represents Tulare County. Your integrity, your moral compass, your good humor and humility have always been your hallmarks, and I thank you for that. I'm just curious what you're gonna do with all your old uniforms? You know, I was thinking about that the other day. You and I are the same age, and I've got three more years of my term, and I'm thinking, I don't think I need any more suits between now and then because, you know, that's plenty of time. What do you do with an old uniform?
Well, first of all, we're recruiting ex-house firefighters. Am I uniform's bitchy?
Thanks, Joe.
But in reality, I intend to find out which of my staff wears the same size so that they can in fact continue to use it.
Very good. Thank you.
I do have a quick thing. Weren't in a prior life, weren't you a fire marshal at some time?
I have had many lives. Many things in previous lives, yes.
You know, as in one of my prior lives as a contractor, there, whenever we had to call a fire marshal out to a job, we all kinda stood in a circle and said a prayer, said, please let it be Joe. And just having had that opportunity to work with you many years ago is you've always been a very easy, wonderful person to work with, helping us to find solutions to problems. And I'm thinking, you know, back many years ago, instead of pulling out red tags and shutting things down, you know, you came out and said, okay, how can we work through this and make this work? So you've always been a great person to work with, wonderful personality, a great leader, and you definitely will be missed.
Chief, I would talk about prior lives that I had, but it's tough when you're only 31. But I will say you are going to be greatly missed, and you did a wonderful job as the Fire Chief of Tulare County and did a fantastic job representing all of your constituents in various communities throughout the county. I'm gonna miss seeing that consistent presence and that consistent voice at all of the various town council meetings. I'm actually gonna be really frustrated if I don't have someone like you to help me when I have a tire go flat when I'm in the early-mart town council meeting. Hopefully you remember that, too. Thank you for helping me get that fixed. I still appreciate that. But what you did for the county was you were a presence of the fire department and a presence of the county in so many areas where there really is very little presence of the county, because all of our various communities, not every one is fortunate enough to have a fire station, but the vast majority of unincorporated communities, at least in District Two, have no county presence, but they do have a fire station. You made an effort to make sure that all of your troops and your firefighters were engaged in the community and were a part of the town, and that really came from the top, and I appreciate your attention to that detail and know that it meant a lot to all of the residents that we all serve up here. And I'm very grateful to have worked with you and gotten to know you. I wish you the best of luck in your retirement, and may the best years of your life be ahead of you.
Chief, let me also thank you for your many years of service and most importantly, for your leadership with respect to performing a very effective public service. You will be missed, and I wish you and your family all the very best. Thank you.
Anybody from the fire department would like to get up and say a few words about Joe. If so, you can. It's just up to you if I'd like to say anything. I'm not putting anybody on the spot, but you know...
Mr. Chair, does he still have the ability to fire somewhere?
Good morning. Has anybody ever been on a mountain road with Chief Garcia?
No. Come on.
Chief Garcia going up to the Camp Nelson, some of the posy meetings. I've truly been afraid for my life. Talking about previous lives, I used up all nine of mine. Chief Garcia has always been a leader in whatever he's done, and you know, you take the philosophy, you lead people and you manage things. He has always been a leader. He's been able to take huge problems, bring them into a funnel, and always have a reasonable solution. There are situations where I can actually feel myself getting grayer, thinking of how to solve a problem. He'll come in and say, no, 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 and come up with a very viable solution. It's been an honor to work for Joe. I call him Joe now that he's getting ready to become a civilian. It's been an honor to work with him. I hope that you all take the opportunity to take him out and go golfing. We've had the opportunity to work on that, but he's been a great leader, great county employee, and a good friend. That's, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just, Clay Smith. The Chief chose me about two and a half years ago to come in and fill in for Ted Mendoza when the Chief retired, Chief Mendoza. And knowing Chief Garcia's background as a state fire marshal, many, many years, a chief officer in the state, to come in and take over the position that he held and try to learn fire prevention and codes, it's impossible. It's really impossible to have a mind like he has that remembers the codes, the numbers, the pages, the book. I like to say, well, I know where to find it, but he can tell you exactly where it's at, and that's a gift. And to be honest with you, there's, you can look at every fire department, there's one or two people that can possibly do that, and he's one of them. And to fill those shoes was daunting, to say the least. He's very patient with me, and I do appreciate the patience, but a great mentor and a great leader, and as he liked to say, he's miserly, and he kept us, he kept us on task, and we've made some great strides under his leadership. We've come up with some new equipment. We've made some changes, and we've added some personnel to try to make it safer for our firefighters, and he's made these decisions and made these choices and the push to get these things done, and what a great way to leave. I think that's just a great legacy, and I wanna thank Chief Garcia and his wife, as
Anyone else? Well, thanks again, Chief. You know, you took over about halfway through. Our fire department's pretty young when you figure we're less than 10 years old getting there, but if you look at when we started this fire department in 2006 to where we are today, it's night and day, night and day. Upgraded equipment, put a lot of people to work, and saved the county a lot of money, and that's the key. So good luck to you, and thanks so much for all your hard work. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item four, which has been pulled off of calendar because the rain couldn't be here this morning, so from there, we'll just move on to item number five, public comment. Anybody wishing to speak to the Board about issues that are not on the agenda, please step forward. State your name and address, please.
My name is Melvin Dean Hunt III, and I'm currently homeless. I don't even know where to begin, but this county is in direct violation of the Sherman Act. I mean, you guys have a sheriff that's the coroner, that's not supposed to happen, and you guys all walk around like it's just a thing that, you know, thing to do. That's wrong, what you guys are doing. These books right here were given to me by Sherman, my grandfather himself. So I hold the books. When my grandfather incorporated me, my name, and he explained everything to me that was going on, asked me to be quiet and not say anything about it. I had a stepfather named Larry Nixon. I don't know, Roe versus Wade? You guys familiar with that? Well, I'm the subject that was in Roe versus Wade. And this county has done nothing but tried to destroy me and, because of that. They tried to, you guys tried to keep, this is a secret from everybody, and you wanted what was left to me so that you could control, you know, the money that was left to me, my inheritance. And my grandfather believed in the Constitution because his father was the founding father, and all you guys have done is destroyed everything that he stood for, and that's wrong, you know? It's wrong what's going on. I know exactly what was left for me in trust, held with this county here, and I've watched and watched and watched, all these judges just take it and destroy it and throw it away. You know, it's a joke to you guys, but it's not to me. You know, this is my family heritage. This was left to me, a little boy, you know? He gave this to me personally, himself, you know? Not to you guys, anybody else. He left it in your control to do the right thing with it, and you're not. You guys are not doing the right thing with it. You guys are in violation of everything that he stood for, and greed, greed has gotten in the way of you guys, and he left it... that he stood for, and greed, greed has gotten in the way of you guys. And he left it to me because I'm not controlled by greed. Greed don't control my life. And I'm not gonna stop. I'll never stop because you're disrespecting my grandmother, you know? This stuff was left in trust for Melvin Hunt, me, and Opal Hunt. Not my grandfather that incorporated this little boy at four years old to steal everything that his dad wouldn't leave to him because he saw how he was, you know? He incorporated my name then and come up with a plan, and then Roe versus Wade, all this stuff happened, and I remained quiet like I was asked to because he said, you know, "If you do this, when you turn forty-five, you'll understand why." And I understand why now, because it's gonna show all, everybody for what they are.
You've had your three minutes. Thank you. Anyone else wanting to talk on your public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. And let's go to the consent calendar. The numbers on there should be changed from six to forty-nine to six to thirty-nine. And item seventeen, the term ending date should be changed from 2016 to 2019. Other than that, anybody else have any... Yes?
Mr. Chair, we don't need to consider it separately, but I just wanted to call attention to item number twenty-five related to Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Tulare County. And I would ask our district attorney and our law enforcement and the Sheriff's Department to maybe work together to put together a presentation and bring it to the board regarding this status here in Tulare County. I know we've gone to many conferences where that has been the focus, and I would like a little bit of a local update of what's going on here. Thank you.
If there's no other comments, I would like to... No. Is anybody else, anybody from the audience that would like to have something pulled from the consent calendar if we're extra? If not?
I would move approval of the ballot to consent calendar.
Move by Supervisor Wordley, second by Supervisor Vanderpool. Vote. Vote is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to our untimed items. Item number forty.
Good morning, Supervisors. Chairman, congratulations. And CAO, County Counsel, Mike Washam, Tulare County RMA. Today before you, for your consideration, is GPI fifteen zero zero two is for general plan initiation in an area near Porterville. The request is to change the land use designation from ag to general commercial. It includes changing a zone from AE-ten to C-two service commercial. And the location, again, is a little south of Porterville within the urban area boundary. The vicinity map, you can see the site down here, south of Porterville. There's an aerial shot of the site as it is today. The request is to expand the existing service station to the east. Caltrans is widening State Route sixty-five from two lanes to four lanes and taking part of the existing facility. So what they're wanting to do is expand their service, existing service station and to the east a little bit. One of the pumps is being removed, and some of the driveway is being removed as part of this widening. The land use is agriculture, as you can see, and then it's just on the outside of the city limits of Porterville. Here's a site plan. As you can see, the existing is to the left, and as proposed, what they're wanting to do is expand to the east there. RVLP checklist, preliminary checklist was done, and the score ended up being six points. Valuation lower than eleven typically says that the land is applicable to be able to be changed from agriculture to other uses. This is the general plan, a land use designation for the city of Porterville. As you can see, just to the north side of the road is retail commercial designation, and on the east to the, or on the west to the north is industrial. This is on the southeast corner, and it's considered agriculture right now and in their general plan. However, we contacted the city of Porterville, and they have no comment on the project. They have no concerns with whatsoever. So with that, staff requests approval for this GPI.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
How long has this facility been there?
I do not know when the gas station was established.
I can answer that. It's been there about fifteen to twenty years.
Okay.
Standard station.
It's just, for me, this is one of those things where I look at this and see another use on an ag piece of property. It speaks to us needing to clean up these, you know, non-conforming use properties. That doesn't mean to wipe 'em off. That means to get 'em zoned properly. So I'm very in support of doing this.
I think the whole idea behind this is the fact they are widening sixty-five to four lanes to T-Pot Dome, and eventually beyond that, hopefully, and in the plans way down the road is a interchange. So I think he's being proactive and getting everything back out of the way right now so he's set up. You'd have to do it again. Okay, bring it back to the board for a vote.
Who approves?
Second.
By Supervisor Rashida, second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. The vote is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Are you gonna take care of item number forty-one?
Yes, I sure will. Thank you again. We're here before your consideration, another GPI. This is for fifteen oh oh four for Nunley, and this is adjacent to the city of Tulare. As a summary, this is a request to change the land use designation from Mooney Corridor to mixed use, and it would also include a zone change from AE-twenty to C-two. The applicant is Greg Nunley with Driven Construction, and this location is just east of the city on the east side of Mooney Boulevard, across from the winery. Here's a vicinity map. As you can see, it's a small triangle right here, across from the winery. Here's the aerial. The project that's proposed is for the construction of an office and storage building on a two-and-a-half acre parcel that's triangular in shape. One side's adjacent to Highway sixty-three, Mooney Boulevard. The other is the southwest, or southeast part of the triangle is along Tulare Irrigation District Canal, and to the north is an orchard. The site's within both the county and the city's urban development boundaries, and it is designated as Mooney Corridor. Although the plan was suspended in 2004, it still is the default. It's not designated as ag. It's actually designated as Mooney Corridor. Here's a site plan of what they're proposing to do. The Mooney Boulevard is running along here, and they're putting in a office and warehouse type of structure, and then they will have a storage area back here for some of their materials. Existing zoning, as I stated earlier, it's AE-twenty, and it's within both the city and county urban development boundaries. General plan and MOU consistency. The general plan has specific policies where urban development can occur, and one of which is directed either towards cities or within urban boundaries. The city of Tulare will be notified, if this is approved, it'll be notified as part of the process, and cooperation will go there if they want to, whether they want to annex the site or not. General plan designations within the city UDBs, PF-four-twelve, that says the counties may maintain general plan, land use designations that are compatible with adopted city designations. The city of Tulare currently designates the site in their general plan update as village. This designation establishes areas for new residential growth, commercial growth, neighborhood markets, some offices. So it's a mixed-use type of development. And as such, what the county's proposing as mixed-use designation provides the greatest flexibility to provide a mix of those types of residential, commercial, and other uses in the area. So this would be the most closely compatible land use designation that the county has to match what the city's adopted general plan is. Specific plans. Our county has a requirement for projects of over eighty acres, or those that have such complexity to require a specific plan. This, a specific plan for two-and-a-half acre parcel would really be infeasible and unnecessary for such a small development. City design standards, PF-four-thirteen. The proposed project would be required to meet city development standards such as curbs, gutters, sidewalks, setbacks, those types of urban standards. Coordination with the cities, PF-four-fifteen. I'll talk a little bit more about that, but this proposal is consistent with the policy, and as part of this, the applicant will be required to consent to annexation as part of this process. And on PF-four-nineteen, this is the application of the RVLP. Normally, the RVLP does not apply in an urban development boundary, but within the MOU, the county has agreed to look at the checklist on that. So therefore, we did, we performed an RVLP checklist on the subject site, and again, here the zone, or the list came up with a point value of six points. Because of the location and all the check, all of the factors that go into analysis for an RVLP evaluation totaled six points. And again, that would be consistent with being, allowing a rezone under the RVLP analysis. To the left is the general plan of the city of Tulare, as shown, the site is within what they call a village designation, where they're requiring large, specific plans. To the other side is showing the existing as Mooney Corridor. Caltrans was consulted on this matter, and they supplied a letter with a number of comments. Basically, these are some of the highlights, including curb, gutter, setbacks, encroachment permits, and an irrevocable offer of an additional fourteen feet of rideaway. The applicant is working closely with Caltrans. Their project will comply with all of Caltrans's requirements that they've sent forward. City of Tulare submitted a comment letter as well. They had a few concerns where they stated that the proposed use is not consistent with the city's village designation. And again, as I mentioned earlier, the mixed-use designation provides the greatest flexibility to provide a mix of residential, commercial, and other uses, which is consistent with the village concept. Another comment is that they say it should require a specific plan, and again, as I addressed earlier, at two-and-a-half acres, if it was slightly lower than this, it wouldn't even be applicable to the development standards. I think we had a two-acre minimum cutoff. So it's barely, and once they give up the rideaway, it's almost, might be close to two acres anyway. So it's really infeasible to do a specific plan on such a small development. Caltrans widening of State Route sixty-three, again, Caltrans submitted their letter. The applicant is working with that, and all of Caltrans's concerns are being addressed and taken care of as this project moves forward. The use is not consistent with the current agricultural zoning. Well, again, this is part of the process. We're changing the zoning. And again, the land use designation isn't agriculture now. It is already Mooney Corridor, and the size and the shape, the location of this two-and-a-half acre parcel really prohibits use for agriculture. I don't know when the last time agricultural uses were on this, but I've been here over a decade, and I don't believe I've ever seen any agricultural use on the property. The site lacks public infrastructure improvements. Again, the development will be required to meet city standards as far as setbacks, curbs, gutters, sidewalk, those types of things. And the MOU requires coordination. Coordination with the city will occur per the GPU policies and the MOU, including discussion with the city regarding the city's infrastructure capability to supply territory outside of its limits, especially in light of the public disclosure of water pressure, water quality problems affecting the city's existing water supply. Really don't know whether they could be able to expand. Again, it's a small project, but because of some of their problems with water and whatnot, we're looking at developing it forward. So with that, as a reminder that this is, the approval of this is not approval project. It's just approval to submit an application and to move forward with it. With that, staff would recommend approval of this project.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that we open up for public comment at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Any questions on the board?
Yeah, a few questions. This morning, the Mooney Corridor, how deep does that go? That just, the properties that are touching Mooney, or does it go a hundred feet?
It's a little bit wider. It's wider than that. I don't know how many feet. It's probably three, four hundred feet, probably. In, when the plan was suspended in 2004, it reverted back to the areas between the city's urban development boundaries, it reverted back to RVLP. Okay, that would be the standard. But those where there was adopted urban boundaries, it reverted back to whatever was adopted. And the most current adopted plan for the urban development boundaries for the city of Tulare has it designated as Mooney Corridor.
Okay. And you said the UDB, so it's within the city's UDB. How about the city limits?
No.
How far is the city limit from that?
The city limits is adjacent to Mooney Boulevard. So across the street, directly across the street is the winery, and that is within the city limits of Tulare. And on the east side of Mooney is county.
It goes down to prosperity, so it's about seventeen hundred feet.
It seems like the, you know, the city is marching out that way, though. They're marching north, and they're marching east. Did they say in that letter what their timeframe for this particular site would be? Is it five years off, ten years off, twenty years off?
No.
But starting this process would give us the opportunity to coordinate with them and find those things out. Okay?
Supervisor Rashida?
I have a question on the property to the southeast of the triangle. What's the current use of that property?
There's a feedlot further to, a little bit further east, and I think there's a pole barn with some storage of hay and feed on part of that. So it's like an open corral. Right up against Mooney, there's nothing. But a little bit further back on that parcel, there's an open corral that I don't know whether they actively use it, but then there's the pole barn, and then right immediately east of that is some sort of a feedlot.
Thank you.
Well, then you got that Tulare Irrigation Ditch, which borders the whole side, like the south side of it, so.
That goes, again, it's a triangle shape. You got Mooney on one side, Orchard on the north, and then the Irrigation District Canal.
Mr. Chair, just a quick comment. I had actually spoken to the applicant about this when he had contacted me, just about this, about what the process would be like if he were to purchase this piece of property and propose a project there. And, you know, I read the comments from Caltrans and also the city of Tulare's comments, and really, this proposed project and what it would be at full buildout if that project actually happens. Again, we're not even talking about the project today, but it would seem to me it would be very consistent with what the city's interests are in the future along that specific corridor. And again, you mentioned that the Mooney Corridor plan is not really in force. It was suspended in 2004, but everything that we have in front of us today seems to be fairly consistent. Let's make that comment.
Supervisor Wordley?
Well, I was just gonna kind of piggyback on what Supervisor Vanderpool was saying. This property is, like all property, is unique, but the small size of the parcel, the triangular piece of it lends itself to this kind of a change of zone, because it's hard to imagine how this could be used for agricultural purposes. And going back to what Supervisor Cox said earlier, we have lots of properties because in the past, we did not have the ability to, with GIS that we now have and so forth, to be able to pinpoint. So we used to just take a green brush and paint everything over with an ag designation, and in many cases, we really didn't properly zone properties. So certainly, I think this makes a lot of sense to go forward with this particular process.
Thank you. Anybody from the public like to speak to this item?
Thank you, Chairman, and member of the board. Darlene Mata here, representing Greg Nunley and Driven Construction, the applicant. We're here to ask for your support in approving and allowing us to submit an application. We would concur with staff's assessment of both the consistency with your general plan policies and the city of Tulare's future general plan policies for mixed use. With that, we're here if you have any questions of us as the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if not, we'll bring it back to the board for...
Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of this item to begin this process.
Move by Supervisor Vanderpool?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Rashida. Cast your votes. Vote's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one quick comment. I appreciate our new general plan because in the past, we had a similar situation in Dinuba, and the idea that we have to apply for future development, they will apply the standards for the city of Tulare and so forth. All of that came out of our general plan update. Before that, it was not a given, and that was, that created problems for the cities, because if you were gonna develop something in the county adjacent and within their UDB, but the development standards were the county standard versus the city standards, that created a conflict. So very much appreciate the fact that we're seeing the benefits of our general plan moving forward, these kind of projects.
City standards and also city coordination. I think that's a good thing.
If I can, I drove by that property yesterday, and it is the best-looking property in that neighborhood.
Okay, that ends our open session meeting. Do we have need for a closed session, counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We do have items for closed session today, items A through I for closed session, and I do anticipate announcements out.
Okay, thank you. Do we move to...
All right, this is Crystal Sullivan, County Council, announcing out closed session today, January fifth, 2016, at 1:23 PM. Item B, Alba versus County of Tulare. And it's District Number one dash fifteen dash C V dash zero one four nine two. There was authorization to defend the individually named county employees with the reservation The motion was made by Supervisor Rashida, Supervisor Worley second, and there was unanimous Turn to item D. Alma M. versus William Newlook et al. Case number one dash fifteen dash C V dash zero one three eight six dash S A V. So motion by Supervisor Worley, second by Supervisor Rashida, and unanimous vote. It's to authorize the defense individually of the named county employee with the reservation Item F, Vickers versus Maldonado. Case number one dash fourteen dash C V dash zero two zero three nine dash S K O. The motion was by Supervisor Worley with a second from Supervisor Cox, a unanimous Authorizing the defense of the individually named county employee with the reservation of rights. Excuse me, without a reservation of rights. Excuse me, with the reservation of rights. Turning to item H. The subject is the Fire Chief Recruitment. And there was a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, a second by Supervisor Rashida, and a unanimous vote to appoint Charlie Norman as the Fire Chief. There are no other announcements.